Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for joining us tonight at East Dundee's regular board meeting, uh, dated Monday, October 2nd, 2023. Uh, I have six o'clock. Frank, you take the role.
Trustee Mahoney?
Here.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Present.
Trustee Britton is absent. Trustee Saviano is absent.
Oh, excuse me.
Trustee Saviano is walking in at 5:59 PM. I got six, I'm sorry, six o'clock on the dot for the record. Six o'clock on the dot for the record. Trustee Tribber?
Here.
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
And President Linum?
Here. Thank you, rise and claim your place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. That's gonna take us to our public comment section. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board either on an agenda or a non-agenda item?
I didn't receive any.
Nope. Oh, what? Mr. Rosen.
Tom Rosen. Um, I think you guys are gonna talk tonight about a parking garage. Uh, continually, people come to me and say, "We'd like to have the Ample Lot." And you guys are the one about the compensation. "Without parking, I will never let you back to Ample Lot." And I, as much as you, would like the Ample Lot to be grass. But you guys gotta solve the parking problems. Next, um, I think you're going about this parking thing in the wrong way. You've got expensive quotes. Uh, Steve Hardre, Hardre Builders, has been working with the village on, uh, on this project for many years. Uh, he started when I started with Walker Parking, uh, getting a rendering that made you do a scene. He went to Walker Parking to get, uh, to work with them on a proposal for this project. And he was unable to get Walker Parking to work with him because they had already engaged another firm. I would expect that's true of other contractors who wanted to give you a bid. But if they are not parking lot people, parking garage people, they don't know how to give you a bid. You didn't give what the bid was. So what I would suggest you do, if you want a parking garage, is go to Walker Parking or other, or some other consulting company like that. You're gonna pay for this either through the contractor or yourself. And get a, a design for parking garage. Get one that you like. And then go out with a quote. Right now, what you have is a bunch of apples and oranges, dogs and cats. And you can't compare them. I mean, you know, six and a half million dollars of millions of dollars to value them. The third thing I would comment is, please do not screw up this historic area down here. Uh, I have seen this board, uh, working with other contractors that are in the class and chrome, glass and chrome. And the rendering that you have in, uh, the packet has a glass and chrome tower. It is not necessary. You don't have to have a covered stairwell. So it's like every little thing, make the darn ring look historic. If you have any questions, um...
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Okay. Nobody else? All right, that'll take us to our consent agenda. We could have a motion.
I will move to, uh, accept the warrant list in the amount of $312,950.66. I'll move to approve a resolution authorizing the reduction of the letter of credit for stormwater improvements for Pal Land LLC. I'll also move to approve a resolution authorizing an agreement and consent to TIF, pledge, and security agreement. And I will move to approve an ordinance amending chapter 37.01 of the village code to eliminate the security deposit for depot rental fees.
Second. Is there any questions, comments? Anybody? Oh, that's good.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Sauter?
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to our regular gen items. Uh, we have just discussion tonight. Um, three items. We have, uh, video gaming, we have, uh, the parking, and, uh, the two properties owned at Van Buren and 72. So we could start out with item A, which is a discussion of the status of video gaming in East Dundee. So, um, if you're prepared, would you like to start us off with that?
Sure. In the packet tonight, there's an updated memo. We last discussed this a little over a year ago. And we talked about enacting some additional guidelines, uh, regarding video gaming in the village. So we did adopt a, a few regulations in addition to what we previously had. And those have been in place for approximately a year. Uh, we continue to be inundated with requests to expand gaming in the village. Uh, the, the most recent annual report that the gaming board put out concluded that video gaming doesn't actually draw people into the community additionally, on top of what otherwise would come on their own. So continuing to add more video gaming isn't going to draw more people to the village. It's just going to dilute what's already here. Which, you know, that's a decision for the board to make, whether that's a, a, an okay thing for the community or a not okay thing for the community. Um, but I did put a suggestion in there that we have a one-year moratorium to continue to evaluate our saturation rate and determine if there's any additional guidelines we may want to put in place down the road or, um, any changes we wanna make to our current situation. Um, so I'm interested to hear everybody's thoughts and, um, go from there.
So let's open that up. Who'd like to start? Jeff, do you have any thoughts?
Um, you said Mount Prospect had forty-something games per resident? I'm trying to remember because I just read it.
Your metrics were really compelling.
What was the, what was the amount?
It'd be good to share.
Yeah. So you need to share the data. Yeah.
Yeah, so right now, our, we, we basically took the number of terminals that exist in the village, divided by our population to come up with a, a rate of 26 terminals per, per resident, which is among the highest in the state. Uh, if we continue to expand video gaming, that, that would obviously make that number even smaller. Uh, the comp that I had in there was Mount Prospect. They have a cap on terminals in their community. And they're obviously a much larger population, but also a much larger square footage of area and, or square mileage of area. And I believe it was one terminal for every, uh, 1,200 residents?
Yeah, something like 1,200 or 1,400.
I didn't remember the 145, but yeah. Anyway, so I was thinking about that. And I also, like, it just in being the creative thinker, uh, what does it have to do also with the fact that we are also a destination place where people come from offside? So looking at our residents, and aren't we around like 30% residential, 7% commercial? Just to throw a number out there. So just thinking of how that factors in as well.
Right. That's a good point.
I mean, obviously, if Mount Prospect has one terminal for every 1,234 residents, we would have two terminals.
Right.
Fascinating. We are a bar town. And, uh, of course, our restaurants have them too. Our gas stations have them. Everybody has them.
Yeah.
Prob, you know, the issue is when a new place comes in and they say, "Well, all these businesses have an unfair advantage to me because I have, uh, you know, this source of income that I can't tap into." And they can. You know, how do we answer that?
The other side of that coin is that there are a lot of businesses that prop up their business using the video gaming revenue. And if it were to be further diluted, we might see some closures of certain businesses. So the, you know, there's, it's always a balance. Um, but I would suggest that if we continue to expand, we would see some businesses close because they would be diluted. And right now, the balance of their, you know, core business revenue is less than the revenue that they're receiving from gaming.
That's troubling.
Yeah. It is because our, we would like our community to cultivate businesses that can make it on their own.
Yeah. Well, of course, some of the businesses are just gaming businesses. So making it on their own is the gaming. Speaking of which, are the two that are on this picture on the mall on 68, are they already open? I'm sorry, haven't been opened in a while.
Yes.
So we have those two open. And out on, at the Dominix building, has there been any inquiries for a gaming cafe there already?
There's already one in the mall itself. There's one in the outlet.
Yeah.
So there's two.
Oh, okay. And has, has anymore, anybody else asked for the possibility of one?
Not in the mall, but the, the new retail building just down the street has a proposal for a gaming cafe.
On Pal?
Yes.
Oh, right. Well, I guess my personal feeling is I don't mind the idea of, um, pausing the new ones for a year. Given that if any of these 21 businesses listed here stop gaming, either they stop it or they go out of business, we have, uh, a waiting list. And during that year, if one of these goes away, so whoever's next on that list can take that, that spot.
So you're suggesting it wouldn't be similar to the way the liquor licenses are, where if, if a business goes away, then that comes off our total?
I mean, I don't know if we'd have to change our code if we just did it the same way and then we just said...
You can keep, so, I mean, there's nothing that requires a municipality to reduce the number of its licenses. You can keep the same number. There's also nothing that requires you to increase the number of them.
But there is, it's in our code, I think, that it does reduce automatic.
Automatically and the liquor.
For liquor, yeah.
Well, on the gaming too. I think we, we wrote a code that said we would match the liquor with the gaming licenses specifically. That was in the last packet.
What do you mean match?
The same rules that apply to the liquor license apply to the gaming in, in the, in the sense that when so business goes out of...
The license follows the proprietor.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And I think part of that, part of the reasoning behind that is so that the village can evaluate new applicants to see, you know, how appropriate it is. Are they gonna be moving into a, a, a strip mall that already has two gaming places? I think it's a really good idea to, um, give it a pause. Actually, at the IML conference, they mentioned, um, in one of the conferences that, um, the state, um, grants immunity. And I don't, I'm not a lawyer. But, um, but in, in temporarily suspending the issuance of permits, both liquor and gaming permits. Um, and, you know, if we, if we set it out there and say, "No, this is a pause, we're gonna review this," I think, um, location, you know, setting a boundary area around it with X number of, um, machines, um, is probably a good thing. And it could be helpful to really help protect the people that already do have their machines that rely on them, you know, for their businesses. And stop the, you know, cannibalization of new licenses into old licenses in existing businesses.
Yeah, I'd like the idea of freezing it for a bit to give us time to come up with, like, a plan of what we wanna do. Like, is there a certain max for each type of business? Like, a gaming cafe maybe gets more, a bar gets less, and then a total cap? A cap for certain kinds of uses or a cap for certain areas of town? Like, this strip mall shouldn't have one in every one of them. But until we have that, it's hard to turn down a request when it's just based on, um, like, we don't have a plan to, to base it on. So it does seem like there are too many. Uh, and I'd like some thought to go into in looking, just cursory look from other people who've looked at the funds that have come in through gaming online in the open data that's available. Uh, over the last year, the number of terminals has increased, but the overall spend is the same. So it does seem like it's diluting. So I'd like to get more data on whether or not we're eventually diluting all of them so nobody, uh, really wants them, but now everyone has them. Like, I'd like to be more intentional about camping it at the right amount. And there are, there was a good point in here about, there is no place for somebody to go get dinner in our town and not have gaming in front of them. So if somebody does have a problem with gambling, we read that proclamation of gambling as a problem awareness and how can we make it better? I think having some options where somebody could go out and not have the temptation of spending their paycheck that they can't afford to put in. I like the idea of targeting more, like, a high-end establishment where there's a lot of disposable income that it doesn't really victimize anybody as opposed to if there's areas where more people are spending their social security and then they can't pay their bills or they lose their home. Kind of creates problems for the whole community. So I think a plan will help us come in at a better spot.
Um, I'm kinda split on this one. I think that, uh, you know, when was this, two, a year and a half ago? Two years ago, we had, uh, the gas station come in to look for, you know, the opportunity to have that, catch an additional revenue stream. I think that it's important that as the village, we at least allow the business owner to choose what they can and cannot, you know, make revenue off of. Um, we do have to obviously regulate to a certain degree, but, um, I do think that we'd be better served by putting a, a maximum amount of units in place as a blanket across the village as opposed to freezing and doing a blanket freeze so nobody can get new units. Whether that's, you know, based on head count, expected it within the new establishment or, uh, square footage or how we wanna break it down. Uh, I think that if we shut it down completely, it's also unfair. So that's my two cents.
Well, for my part, um, we've already, we, we sorta have the horse out of barn on this one. We've got, um, I, the idea of gaming was never one that I was, um, I embraced very well or very strongly. However, it's here and so we went with it. Um, and yeah, it got a little ahead of us and it got away from us a bit. But my thought is, is that it's more of an entertainment, um, type of, of aspect. And, uh, I really don't see if that there's a, um, a tavern or a restaurant, if they have a, a corner dedicated to a couple of, uh, gaming, uh, machines, not a big deal. Where I thought it was ridiculous is the gas stations. It makes no sense that you'd have a gaming at a gas station. The idea that I can't compete selling gasoline unless you let me have my customers gamble is a really weak argument. Same thing with the idea of it being in a liquor store. That's nuts as far as I'm concerned. However, um, you know, we've got new restaurants coming in who, uh, and one of our, one of the, the proprietors for that is here. Um, and, uh, I really think we need to allow them to have what everyone else in the downtown has currently. So I don't think we should be, uh, too quick to eliminate it from that standpoint. But we've got cafes. And Andy, to your point, the idea of it being, um, a, a problem, if you will, for certain individuals, I think is more likely to happen with, uh, an increase in gaming cafes as opposed to having a couple of games in a, in a restaurant. I don't think anybody's gonna gamble away the kids' college fund after dinner. You know, uh, I really don't think that's a problem. I also don't think that, uh, it's really up to us to structure somebody's business model by saying, "Well, this is gonna be the one restaurant we want to have in the town where you can't gamble." That's not there. Um, it has to be really the choice of the proprietor, whether or not they want it. And if they do, we need to set up rules that will, will guide it. Uh, but as far as, it's gonna be a tough one because as far as limiting it, that's, it's gonna be a real, a real tough call. Um, but I don't, I wanna be careful to make sure that we're not going to exclude individuals who are going to be opening up new restaurants and so forth, uh, not having it if they choose. Um, as opposed to, you know, you know, making the rules and, and making the decision. That's exactly what we're talking about. I know, I know. And I, I really, I think we need to tread lightly here. So...
Well, I have to say, I do... Oh, go ahead.
Why? Because you, you made the point too that how, how do you say that it's okay for one and not another? I mean, that's a difficult balance.
I don't know, the plan or like, it sounds like we, you know, too many of them was your feeling and that now how do we fix it? It seems like deciding how many we do want or how many is appropriate, figuring out how to cap that, and then finding a fair way to disperse them with that number. But I think a plan would have, like, we just keep giving out more and more like when we know that we're maybe double or triple where we wanna be. I think we need to pull it back and figure out a way to make it fair with the number we do want instead of increasing the problem.
Yeah, I think we're all agree with that. So, but, you know, how best to go about that is gonna be something that we need to focus a little bit further on, so...
That is tricky because I'm also not a fan of telling someone that is a business owner and investing a lot of money what they can and cannot do at their establishment. So I, I agree with that as well. Like, I don't want...
It's a tough call.
I don't wanna be the micromanager like that. Um, but also, like, maybe it's something where we gather data, we let them open with a certain number. And then once we say like, "Okay, as a village, we wanna have this many," then, you know, I mean, with capitalism, businesses are gonna go out of business if they don't make it. Machines are not, I feel like. And so we can end up having a goal or a plan to curb it to this certain number eventually, but tread lightly and give some to the new businesses and just kind of pull back, um, closures and reopenings, if that makes sense.
Well, when the argument comes before us that if you don't let me have the gaming in my establishment, which is a, a type of business that would be completely unrelated to game, you know, to gaming, uh, or I'm gonna go out of business, well, then I'd say you're either doing something wrong in your, your, you know, initial business, your core business, um, or, um, you need to, you need to get out because you're not making it. I mean, you can't, we can't have every one of our businesses in town, I mean, supported just with gaming.
I think, I think, you know, there's probably some logic to that, truth to that. But also think about it this way, you know, TIFs have a bad name, but everybody does TIFs because if you don't, you're listing out to the community next door to you. That's just the way it is. So everybody does them. It's kind of the same thing. It's like if, if, you know...
Yeah, it's only the, the whole point behind a TIF is to promote growth in what has been proven or shown to be a blighted area. So there's, there's a little bit different. I would question whether or not gaming would have the same sort of...
Of the competition, competition with another business. You're saying if you can't make it without gaming, then there's something wrong with your business. But they're, they're shorthanded. They have a, a one less revenue stream than all the other businesses do. So I don't, I don't agree necessarily 100% that if you can't survive without the gaming, then you're, there's something wrong with the business, is all I'm saying.
Well, no, I mean, if, uh, well, my point is, is that if that's the argument that one would wage, then it, you'd have to really look at what it is you're doing or how well you're doing it. Because, you know, without gaming, you know, my liquor store's gonna go out of business? Or without gaming, my gas station's gonna go under? Well, but you're in a business to sell gasoline. You're not in the business to, you know...
Right. But, but the reason the gas station said that is because we have three other gas stations qualify as truck stops. And so they get the gaming without, uh, any special thing. So that's what he said. He said, "All these other businesses in town have it and I don't." That was literally his, you know, point.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I understand that. But if the state of Illinois allows for a truck stop to have it, if you don't make, if you don't meet the criteria of what is a truck stop in that instance, then, you know, it's not on us. So, I mean, there are just some rules that we have to follow with this, so, um...
Well, I think we have enough direction to go back and do some further refinement and research and then come back.
Come back, do some too.
Foundation.
All right. So, okay, would anybody else have anything? No? All right, then we're gonna go ahead and move on to our next item of discussion, which is a discussion of the responses to the village's issued request for a proposal for the construction of a parking garage in the downtown of East Dundee. So how would we like to open this one? Erica, would you like to kind of run us through the, we had three RFPs, they all came back. As Tom had mentioned, wild money for these, so...
So we did receive the requests for proposal responses in August. They were evaluated by staff and scored. There is a recommendation to proceed with, uh, the middle price option. The proposals, I think, were very thorough. And I'm gonna have, uh, our village engineer come up and explain to you how the design-build process works. There's, you know, we, we talked about this actually when we issued the RFP. Uh, we, we always have the option of design, pay for the design, come back, go out, pay for the construction. Uh, but that adds a year to the timeline or, you know... So we would be essentially, if we chose to potentially save money by doing the process separately, we would also lose money by not having those parking spaces available for, you know, a year. Right now, the construction, if we move forward, would be done in October of 2024. If we broke it up into two pieces and possibly saved money, we would not be done until October of 2025. And during that year, you would venture to guess the village would make more money because more people would be able to come and park and patronize the businesses. So there's, it's always a balance of, you know, what, what's our priority? And we've been talking about the lack of parking since I started here almost two years ago. So there is an argument to be made on both sides. But, uh, where we find ourselves tonight is looking at the bids that we received and evaluating them and then discussing whether or not, uh, we're ready to move forward, so...
Well, before you go to Joe, can we talk then a little bit about the process of eliminating the lower bid? Was it like 5.9, was it?
Um, I, so I was not on the evaluation team, so I can let Joe speak to how they came to the conclusion that they did for the recommendation because there's two different construction methodologies in the bids. And I believe that that was part of the thought process. So, Joe, could you explain? I'm sorry, I forgot to put the presentation up. So if you need me to, I can do it right now.
No, that's okay. That's in the packet, aren't you guys?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we, we put together an RFP back in June and opened it up in August. And we sent three proposals. The three proposals were from Portigan Clark, McQ, and Mortenson. The prices ranged from 5.8 million to 7.4 million. It was a two-step evaluation. It was Chris, Franco, and Phil. And I sat down and went through, uh, four different criteria for the evaluate, first part evaluation. I had them all together. They were all pretty close in point-wise. 2.0, 2.15, and 2.05. So in the RFP, we stated that we would open up the highest two or three proposals. So since we got three and they were so close, we went on to step two, looked at the price of the proposals. So in, in the evaluation of the price proposal, we also took in account the actual stall count that was gonna be provided with price. And then we, we broke out the cost per stall. And McQ had the lowest cost per stall at $39,106.24. And the other two were roughly $50,000. So looking at that and also looking at their total stall count, 163 stalls versus 117 and 149. We felt that it was beneficial that it was extra stalls with the lower stall count. That's how we came up with our foundation.
Joe, quickly, um, did that stall count include any construction behind River Street Tavern Building?
So there were three different proposals and we got three different layouts. So the, the Mortenson plan called for using just the, say, along Hill Street, there's that long triangle that goes east-west, not the, the skinny part of the rectangle that goes north-south that ties into Jackson. So Mortenson had a grunt, a grade level that used that portion and then a second level used the whole lot footprint. The Portigan-Clark used whole footprint for grade level and second level. And, um, McQ used the, they're, they're kind of a two-and-a-half story, which was unique. They had the grade level being the same as the, the Mortenson where it was just the left side or the east-west portion. And then had a single story, uh, basically they caught the first story using the whole footprint. And then another story to the back, which again is the, the north half of the property. And that's how we got the extra stall. But even with that, this price... And that's how we got that extra stall count. But even with that, this price was quite a little personal.
Um, I had a question. So you said the RFP went in, in your memo here, you said that it was published on August twenty-first, but the bids were due August twenty-fifth. That seems like a really short timeframe. Is that a typo in here?
In June, we released it.
In June? Okay.
Yeah, because there was a lot of.
Okay. I was gonna say.
That would be impressive.
And then, and then the purpose to, to go back to Tom Rosier's point is the, the firm that he mentioned was a design firm and what we're, what we were looking for, hoping to work with was a design and construction.
Right. To streamline the process.
Yeah.
Basically, a design bill is, you're getting a, a turnkey product. So, you're involved and can make decisions on the design, but they're taking care of the design and the construction. So, you've got your total on, on some price, you know, you give them a check, they give you the keys, and you don't have to process it. You go to design, you've got to pick your designer first, and then work with a designer. And then, to offer bid, award contract to a contractor. If the bids come in and we don't like them, then we need to make.
Changes.
Changes at that point because the designer wasn't talking to the, the constructor to create the race.
Yeah, it's that important note that you just said, is the design is, that is in the packet, is not the final product. So, in the design build process, staff would work with the chosen firm to refine the design to something that we think would be contextually appropriate and enhance the downtown, not detract from it. So, that would be a, an iterative process where we would go through many steps to come up with a design that we think is fantastic and we're happy with and not, you know. There were elements of all three designs that were compelling. But I, I'm sure that we can come up with something that is a one-hundred out of one-hundred versus a, you know, maybe an eighty-five.
What, what would we be looking at as far as likelihood that if we were to trim back or alter the design, that we'd end up shaving some of the, the costs? And if they're going to give us, as Tom mentioned, you know, a steel and glass tower that may look, you know, appropriate in downtown Arlington Heights, it doesn't necessarily look that way here. Do we need that, you know, that extra ornament, if you will? And if not, you know, I'm just, I'm very concerned and curious about how much we might be able to, to shave off that final price.
I couldn't tell you how much you could shave, but throughout the process, the design process they go through and do bidding with their, with their contractor. So we, we can determine, you know, what cost savings are we putting in.
Well, and if we are going to alter the, the, the design aspect of it, do we put ourselves in a position where we are right now? Whereas if we, as a, as a village went to Walker or some other company like that and said, you know, give us a design and then got a hold of a builder. Erica, you had mentioned that it would push, likely push the completion date probably into twenty-twenty-five, but would you, would that happen anyway? I mean, it sounds like if we go ahead and start altering the design of what has been presented, then we're kind of, are we back at square one? That's one of the one things. Because then essentially, what we've done is we've gotten hold of a builder and we're going to scrap the design. I mean, if it's significant enough that we're, they're starting over, then it does put us in a position, like Tom had mentioned, where we just go and get our own design somewhere and find a builder to build it on our own.
Jeff, I think there's two, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think there's two different things here. There's, there's, like, what part of the cost, what percentage of the cost is the structure? What, and what part of the cost is just the facade? And the facade is, I think, what I find objectionable about this. I think that's probably, Tom and I kind of see eye to eye on that. And I think that that's probably ten percent of the, facade is probably ten to seven or eight percent of the cost. I'm not a building guy, but, oh, yeah? Joe, Joe likes that.
Also that, but.
Yeah.
Cheap to expensive, you're not going to save that whole ten percent.
Right, 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 exactly, exactly.
But there's also time to consider, is my.
But.
Yes, we'll save, but does it push the time?
Right, and.
The, the design build process that has been proposed with the completion date of October twenty-twenty-four builds in time for that design process. So they, they are required to build that into the schedule, knowing that on average it takes, you know, if we were to award this contract next month, we would spend three-ish months going through the design process so that we'd be ready by spring to construct and be able to order materials, et cetera.
And then would be that three months, if you will, for design, you know, alteration questions, meetings, stuff like that, is built into that October date?
Yes.
So, you know, you're, you're working with somebody that's gonna, is, is, in my, in my field, a vertical instead of having an architect and a builder working separately and looking through their own, you know, financial gain. When it's vertical and, and it's coming from one company, we can, we can get through a lot of things. But the other thing that you can do to, to slow down or to speed up that time is to really give good direction. I think Catagin and Clark probably gave the most, what I felt, feel is the most appropriate facade. Unfortunately, I don't think they're building structure with a number of, of, of parking spots. So, if we can give, um, McQ, is it McQ? McQ, you know, the right kind of direction on, you know, specific direction, say, I don't like it. And so then they have to come up with something else to like, we really like this and this works and that works and, and, you know, how long is that going to take? That is something that is going to speed up your process.
Right.
A lot more. Any other suggestions, Joe?
How much would it cost to get these architectural plans? If we started with an architect, we'd be committing to paying a good amount for those plans. Is that correct? Because it felt like we asked for this because we wanted to know the price tag, because a lot of speculation on grants would cover this and it'd be cheaper than a parking lot to make because there'd be so many grants because we're making a structure and if it's infrastructure, we can get more grants. So, that's, I think, makes a big difference when we see the numbers and we're going to have to pull out a three or four million dollar loan. That's not really the same. So I wouldn't want to spend all this money on architect drawings if we find out this is not in our budget for right now. So I think it's worth discussing if this price tag and this mode of financing is something everyone approves of? Or if there are more grants that we can go after, if there's a federal ones, or if we already fully explored that?
Well, there is other grant money. We, we raised roughly, through that and expiring TIP funds, we're about halfway there with this middle bid, with what we've got ready to go. So, we're looking at around three mil that we'd have to come up with yet, and I've already talked to a, a number of individuals for grant money. There's Rebuild Illinois money, that can happen. There's, actually, there's still some ARPA money. I've been making phone calls with people at the county, and I think it's certainly worth exploring. I don't know, though, how far into the completion of this we would be still eligible for grant money. Because even if it's done, we could still be awarded grant money to, to reimburse what we've already incurred. So do you, do you know offhand? I mean, I guess it would depend on the type of grant. I don't know. How far you likely could get grant money after the completion? Because a lot of times, that's what happens. We'll get done with the project and then grant money will come in and.
We can still actively apply for grants while we're in the process of moving forward. I think once, once the ribbon's been cut, it's a lot more difficult to get a grant.
It is.
You can always, you know, start your project, continue to apply, and then get, get grants that then cover your debt service. So, if, if we're ready to talk about the financing piece and we're sort of past the construction piece, we can start delving into that.
Yeah, that's a tough discussion.
I, I do agree with what Kathleen is saying. The, the style and the facade from that same one felt like they really tried to be historically matching the architectural elements in the town as opposed to just pulling a few colors out and putting them in the glass. So, I felt like that one looked the best, and then the structure, getting more parking spots was appealing for that one. So I agree on that. If we get back to discussing which of these we like. But, but yeah, I think the financing of it is a major concern because of two other things that we know that we have to come up with soon is funding the police pension is millions of dollars and then possibly a red service line replacement could be millions of dollars. So, that's why I like the idea of doing this and a loan might seem fine, but with these other things as well. I just want to make sure that we don't start one and then two other, maybe more important ones, like the police pension funding will save us money the sooner we fund it. So, that seems like an urgent one. And both of them have mandates where we're being forced to do both of them. So this is more voluntary.
So, talking about that, you know, we did a pretty good study on the square footage of space to get the number of ideal spots based on the square footage that we have downtown. But, is there, it's all loosey-goosey, but I think it, it would be something that would could serve as somewhat of a guide of, like, what would, if all of the business owners that are here, all listening, rapped to this conversation, could use five or ten more spots that they could say, okay, it's going to be filled, what's our return on investment for each spot? I don't know. I'm not a financial analyst. Joe, get on that, would you?
Absolutely.
What's, what, what could our potential return on investment in tax dollars be to help infuse and offset that?
So before we get too deep into the weeds on the funding mechanism, you know, I had a conversation with a couple of trustees today about this and, you know, it's been something we've been talking about a long time. And, you know, our downtown is, is so unique and it's unlike any other. And this is the catalyst development. It's, you, you have to have a vision and an imagination to see this community ten years from now, fifteen years from now, and understand that the decisions that we make today are shaping what our future is going to be. And it's a little like Field of Dreams, you know, if you build it, they will come. We only have a certain amount of space in that downtown that could fit something like this. And we have other properties that are in discussions or being talked about for redevelopment that are going to need to utilize this parking. And they're going to, this is going to be like the linchpin that creates some momentum, that continues to build upon the success that we already have. And we want to bring more residents to the downtown area to live. We want to make, bring more visitors in, to patronize the businesses. So this is all a leap of faith in some regards, but also, it's not because we've proven that our model works. We've proven that the downtown is very successful. Every time we have an event, there's no parking. And we need to address the issue. And, you know, I keep hearing this argument about it's to be so much cheaper if we just built a surface lot there. Well, if you built a surface lot there, you take what is amazingly beautiful downtown and you just.
Turn it into a strip mall.
You detract from it. You detract from it. It doesn't, it doesn't. Doesn't, it doesn't provide any aesthetic value. It doesn't do anything for us. It just, oh. Not, not really the highest and best use of the space. But, you know, some communities have done it, with limited success. But I wouldn't recommend it. It's, it's really, you know, for what, what we're trying to achieve and the path that we're trying to move forward on, you know, something contextually appropriate that, you know, honors the historic nature of that downtown is really what would be most befitting of the space. And the, the gap that we have currently in parking, the gap that we'll continue to have as more development happens down there, we're going to continue to have to be creative to address parking shortages. And this is a very good option. I understand that the price tag is a challenge. And, and that's partially because, you know, we are a small village and it just somehow seems like maybe we're not big enough to have a parking garage, but we actually are and it's needed and it's, you know, fairly overdue. But, one of the funding sources that we talked about with Scott today, I talked about with Scott today, was the Business Development District Fund. So we have this BDD. It's been in place for about ten years. So, in case everybody didn't already know this, when you patronize any of the businesses within the district, there's an extra point seven-five tax that gets applied to your bill. That money goes into the fund, funds improvements in the district. So, that could be a revenue source that we could dedicate to this. Now that expires in ten, ten years, twenty, somewhere around there. But that could be enough to pay the debt service on what we would borrow. In addition, you know, I did propose using some, some TIP funds that we have available. And we have some very healthy TIP revenues. We'll continue to have those. And we're, we're actually really successful in developing the industrial base, which will continue to yield us dividends down the road. So, Andy, your point about how are we going to fund pension and how are we going to fund water service lines? You know, we have some pretty good options for those two things, very separate. You know, one of our TIPS is coming offline at the end of this year, and so next year, we, the last year, we'll receive increment. And once that TIP is done, we can capture our portion of that increment, which will probably fund half of the shortage that we have right now in the police pension fund for our annual payment, which is, is great. I mean, this is, this is a story of success. This is like, everything you want your TIP to do is, after twenty-three years, come offline, give all the taxing bodies the ability to capture their portion of the increment and then give you a stable source of revenue to, you know, dedicate to some funding source. I'm going to suggest the police pension because I think it's important. The other part of that overall story is, you know, the Caterpillar development is starting to put money in the TIP fund. There's, there's all kinds of good baseline pieces of this puzzle that have been put in place by people before us and some of you that were on the board before us, that started to build up a, a fund of money for when a project like this comes along and we don't have to borrow the entire amount of money for it. That's fantastic. It's a really good place for us to be, sitting here making a statement about something that we don't have to say, well, we don't have the money. We've got to borrow the whole thing. Like, we don't, we're not in that place and that's, that's really great.
High Street Development, too, is another one that will be coming on.
Yes.
The roles real soon. So that's going to be significant because the, the, the TIP portion that will be coming to the village is very significant. And we, we're getting roughly two-thirds of what's going to be coming in on that, so.
Right. And while we still have challenges that confront us and that we, you know, we're, we're projecting for our, our long-term financial security, we also have, you know, sources of revenue that we can make choices about. So, that's.
That weren't around ten years ago when we were relying on Walmart tax, sales tax. Got it.
So can I ask, Joe and Erica, you might both know, if we were to contract with or, you know, seek the help of a, of a Walker-type of company that does nothing but design decks, how long would it take? I mean, if, if they hadn't looked at us before, let's say, start to finish, are we talking a month? Are we talking six? Do you have any idea?
I think they have three months in the design process, so I would think it's about the same. But you lose the, the communication with a contractor to price out any changes instantly. So if you brought the bid and for some reason everything's high and you're working on cutting something out, you've got to start over.
Well, I get it. I get it. I'm just thinking that there are other options. And Mr. Rosier's mentioned, there are other builders out there that haven't taken part in the RFP process, which I think is worth exploring, but we would need, in order to be able to put the village in the same position we are now with the policies that we have to see, we'd have to have a design idea already in place. That may be taken care of as well. So, I think we just, we need to consider the idea that there's, there's other options that haven't been presented to us that I don't think would require a whole lot of time to, to find out exactly where we stand on that. So, you know, just as part of the discussion, I think we should all consider that. So, you know, just as part of the discussion, I think we should all consider that. Do you want to continue then with, is there anything else that you had?
I guess I would say a few things. I'll just reiterate what I've said in the past, that this is a terrible place for a garage. That downtown street, our main street is our most valuable asset in this village. We should utilize that land for a mixed-use development that has residential and commercial. That is how this village would make the most revenue. We don't make revenue from parking lots. People can't work at parking lots. People can't shop at parking lots. I'm not opposed to the idea of a garage in general. I just don't think it should go there. Our engineer gave us a memo six months or so ago comparing the cost. You were pretty accurate with your garage cost. Huh?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. That's right. We got it six months ago. It was put out two years.
No, that was, the parking study was two years ago, but the cost estimate that you provided.
It was just a few months back.
Was just a few months back.
Yeah. But the flat lot that nobody likes was less than $500,000, if I remember correctly. That's hard to justify spending. And, and for the number of spots that was, what, 80, 80 some spots versus what we're getting here is 160 spots with this bid, 140 or 100 and some, you know, a handful more on some of them for 10 times the cost. It's a tough bill as well. But I understand, I understand the argument that a flat lot would look bad, which is why you don't put a parking lot in your, on your main town, you know, your main street strip. I do, did you find out the BDD, the BD, BDD? What is our annual revenue from that point seven five?
It's about $420,000.
So I mean, that, that basically pays for this thing.
For the debt service.
For the debt service.
Yeah. The, the goal would be that there would be no sort of taxpayer funding.
Right. Because, I mean, the truth is, this garage is not going to serve the residents of East Dundee. Residents of East D, most of them can walk to the downtown. This is for, I mean, this is for our restaurants and it's for people from out of town coming in that need to, to drive here. But the residents are, you know, if we put it on to debt service and pay for the general fund, who are going to have to pay for it? You know, so I do like the idea of doing it as like the, the tax, the, the sales tax for that district because then it's like a, a usury fee, right? Like if you go downtown, you have to help pay for the parking, you know? So I do like that idea quite a bit versus just adding it to the general fund fees, you know, debt. I don't know what else I would say other than I wish there was a better place to put this and I, I don't have one necessarily to recommend. So I guess there's that, other than, you know, if you look at their plans, they're, they're making an L. Is there a reason why we can't put storefronts on that first block and then have just a straight run behind there? Obviously, we're going to sacrifice maybe 50, 60 spots, but it sure would be a better use of that land, in my opinion.
Well, and that's legitimate, only if we're going to sacrifice 50 or 60 spots, you've already cut by a third what the deck's full potential has. And you're adding then to that stress, the fact that there are going to be patrons.
I get that, but also as we further, like we have right now, well, I'm going to say right now, we have nearly adequate parking for what we have. A lot of people walk downtown. A lot of people walk downtown. There's, you know, a dozen nights a year that we max out. And we need more. You know, if you go downtown to Chicago and you park two city blocks away from where you're going, you, you could still be yourself lucky.
Yeah, you.
But for some reason here, if you park two blocks down the street, oh my gosh, it's a major catastrophe, you know? So, you know, a little bit, we're spoiled here in the suburbs, I guess, but, you know, that creates suburbs that look like giant parking lots, you know? So I don't know. It's just.
Well, I.
I, I don't like the idea of putting a parking lot on our main street is all I'm going to say about that. I wish we could put it somewhere else. I, I will say that if everybody's on board with doing this, McQ is, you know, I, I work in construction. McQ is a very, very reputable company that does fantastic work. I would definitely be, feel very comfortable with using them. And like I said, using, I think, the, the sales tax, the BD sales tax is the way to go to pay for it on top of the cash on hand and the top of the grants or whatever other grants we're going to get will be great. That's, that's generally my feeling.
Well, the financing is, is important. I understand the frustration on location. But if, if you think about it, most of the, most of the towns and suburbs that have this type of structure have it very close to their business districts. I mean, that's what it's meant to support.
Yeah, but you go to, you go to St. Charles and they've got, they've got retail on that first floor. They've got, and then it either goes down and, you know, I don't think any of your contractors have considered going down or if that's even possible because we're so close to the river, all that other kind of stuff. But, you know, you had sent out a video of that one town that you went to that very, very much was trying to create a walkable, friendly kind of community downtown that, you know, and we're trying to do that with a riverfront. And they put all their, they put all of their parking underground because they wanted to focus on people and interactions with people and interactions with businesses first and foremost, and not have to walk around cars and, and everything else. So that's just, I, I see your point and I, and, and I appreciate it. And I, I have the same concern too. I definitely have.
There is vacant land behind the DC Gobs. There is land that we could repurpose behind the DC Gobs as well, but there is vacant land behind the DC Gobs right now.
What about the old pump station?
The old pump station?
I'm very glad it's.
Oh, but that's largely residential. You're surrounded. You've got houses that, you know, would surround it. So, you know, you have to balance the field and the purpose of what you do. I mean, I, you know, it, it, it's a tough call. We're never going to get everything we want and realize.
Right.
It's hard to compare East Dundee to Chicago and see what they do in, in St. Charles. Their deck is what, four, four floors? We're going to be limited to two if we, if we want this to fit in. So aesthetically, we need to make sure that it works.
Yeah.
The ability to go underground based on the table, floodplain, if you will, we probably are limited there in not being able to do that. So.
We are.
But, you know, these are our business community out here.
I'll, I'll listen to you.
Kevin, you bring up a good point. I, I do wonder about that. What if it was still an L on the second floor, but on the first floor, you had a storefront on the first floor and then you still have the long strip on the back. At least we could put a couple of storefronts.
You know what's going to cost to build up storefronts on the front of there? You're, you're worried about the price now. You start building those up and you've got to rent them.
I'm talking about that, that revenue that we could bring in from those storefronts would, would help pay for this. You know, right now, we're going to build this thing. Nothing, it's not going to generate any.
Well, we'd also have to consider with that idea, a complete change in the design of the structure itself. And so engineering this for a, a couple of storefront type of, of units to withstand parking up above is going to be a complete change in.
No, they had, they, they already had an option. They already had an option that even had rooftop parking on here.
Well, and again, you know, if we do that, and, and I understand it, if you take away 50 or 60 spaces out of the 160 that are potential, you know, you, and you're going to start bringing in additional patrons, that's going to add to the stress that we currently have. And so, you know, we have to consider it. You know, we need the biggest bang for the buck, I think. And I think the deck is going to get us there. Yeah, it would be great to have it, you know, a mixed-use kind of thing, but I don't think we have the land available to do that. And the downtown, it doesn't, it's really not conducive to, to that sort of idea. But yeah, it'd be great. It really would, but.
Well, it is conducive to it. Just we don't want to pay for it.
Rich, did you want to weigh in on this?
Well, I know we need it. I look forward to having it. You know, but I think one thing that we could also take into consideration too is if this becomes something where financing is painful, that we convert it to a paid lot, you know? So, and I don't know what the rules around that are. If we have the authority to change it to a paid lot at any point as a village, but I think that's something we should definitely keep in mind, you know? We want to keep doing events. It's going to fill up. It's going to pay for itself if we do that. So that's an option as well. And it keeps us from having to do it to the downtown parking if we get into a really big parking snafu.
Yeah, we've had, we've had some discussions on, on fee parking. I, I myself would like to avoid it. I know that the, the business community that's here with us tonight, I'm sure would love it as well. If you can afford or if you can provide for your patrons, free parking, it's, it's going to have a greater effect. And if people are going to go to a particular restaurant or store and they know they got to fill a coin in, I'm not going to say they're going to think twice about it, but it may have an effect on their decision to come down here or as often. You know, and so if we can, from a financing standpoint, and that's what, you know, the metered parking would be all about, that, that's something that we would have to look at afterwards. But if, if where we're at right now, the funding that we've already got available, we're more than halfway there or roughly halfway there, I think, I think we can handle the rest of it, especially with the options or the opportunities for further grant money. And while you can't count on that, I, I myself am enthusiastic about some of the options and opportunities that I've already looked into. So, you know, we'll keep doing it, but I, I would like it if we could avoid charging for it. You know, I, I don't want to go into the general fund necessarily. I don't want to raise taxes and I don't want to, I don't want to have to charge parking. So people, you know, people will come here if, if they know they don't have to fight for a space or they don't have to pay to park. So East Dundee will be at the top of their list in their minds. Hey, you know, let's go down there. There's, there's lots of things to offer. And, you know, if we go to some of these other towns, you know, they, they charge, but.
Well, I don't think, I think a lot of them. I, I think most in the suburbs don't charge.
Yeah. Well, and, and it, that funding has to come from somewhere. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a partnership between the, you know, the, the business community and the, and the village to, to provide the parking. I mean, we work together and we rely on the sales tax that comes in from all these businesses to provide essential services. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it has to be, it has to be a shared effort. So.
So my two cents, so I like the idea of trying to get more grants. I like the idea of the BDD funding because I think that's awesome idea so our residents aren't paying for everything. I'm also not the person that spends three weeks deciding what purse to buy. So I'm someone like, I want this thing done yesterday. McQ is a great reputable place. I say make sure it's aesthetically pleasing to the downtown because I, I love this thing, the glass colors, but not for here. So I appreciate what you were saying too about the aesthetics. So I'm like, I want this yesterday. And I know our business owners do too. So I'm like, let's not drag our feet. That's how I feel.
Yeah. One more thought on the location. Is there any possibility of on Third Railroad and Hill Street, that property, donor land property we're acquiring, that that could somehow be fashioned into retail on the bottom with parking above? There's kind of more room to work with and it's halfway between the downtown and the riverfront where we're redeveloping. I can't remember what plans we have for that, but would that be worth exploring before committing to this location?
So I was just going to mention that, that property is, you know, basically, it's a Cadillac. Like it is, it is a great piece of property to do something amazing in it. And whatever gets built there, we'll need to incorporate some parking, but it's not going to solve the problem of the parking. It's going to add to the problem of parking. So we need to balance that. But the potential for that site, I think, has a greater upside as a development versus this site, which is smaller and a little quirkier.
It's closer to the, to the depot park.
Right. So it's, it's an option, but I wouldn't say it's the best option. There's, there's no, like you, like you all have said, there's no perfect option, but this is the option that we have right now that is available and can, can be executed. So it's going to be a good discussion we're going to have on the future of the lumberyard property once we acquire it as to what we'd like to see there. But just based on the interest that I've heard from people who are wanting to do something with that property, the ideas are limitless and the potential upside is huge. But I, I don't know how we lay it out in such a way that all of the people that are on Third Street are facing the back of a parking garage. But, you know, there's ways to make it aesthetically pleasing. But it's also trickier because it's closer to the floodplain and a portion of that site is in the floodplain. So it's, whatever gets built there is going to have to deal with that and that will be expensive.
Well, and this site is, right as you pull into the downtown, you're immediately parking, which is better than pulling people all the way through. So we'll get less traffic to the north end of it.
Right.
It isn't something that generates revenue, but I think it indirectly might because if people are turning away from our downtown because it's not easy to park on a Friday night, then that's lost revenue for everybody who isn't parking in the town. So like, is there something in the meantime, like assuming we do move forward with this and it takes another year, since Scott mentioned we have the parking lot by Hager that we could start parking in immediately, could we on peak nights, like Friday nights, Saturday nights, run a trolley back and forth where people can get into the downtown, park at Hager or park maybe if the church agrees to lease out their spots Saturday night or sometime then, like have some sort of temporary relief or up to the library of somehow a shuttle running, looking at the price tag of six or 70 million seems like a very cheap solution to do something like that for the interim?
I, I think there's even another option. And I like Mr. Roser, if we have a signed deal and plan going forward to build something like this, open up that gravel lot for people to use, for the public to use while that's being built. You wanted parking. We're working on getting you parking, but you're making the problem worse by not letting, letting people use that lot in the meantime.
So, okay, and I, I would like to see about getting a, a sense of the time it would take to contact another company. If you've got a couple, I mean, I, I know Walker's the one, but if there's got to be others out there that we might be able to get a feel for the timeline of, of a design on this and then contact the builder, whoever it would be that might be able to put this thing together and see if we can, if we can, if it's not necessarily going to add to, to the completion time, but yet might save money on the bill, it's worth exploring.
So then why do we do an RFP if we're going to favor somebody or another?
Well, I, I don't know if everybody, I, I know there are companies out there that may not have understood or were aware of it. And that's my only point.
So if we were to go sort of start over, we would have to draft an RFP for the design, issue that RFP, get the bids, open the bids, score the bids, review the bids, award the bid, then start the design process. And then once we have the design completed, we'd have to repeat that same process of drafting another RFP for the construction, issuing the RFP, waiting for the bids to come in, reviewing the bids, awarding the bid and then starting construction. So.
Without actually knowing, it would save us.
Right. Yeah.
Jeff, I think then we, we just have one person pointing their ass. I think you want one vendor, not one two.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to do a new RFP to reset all these things.
No, and I'm not, I'm not really wanting to, to start the game over again. That's not what I'm suggesting, because that's, you know, that, that is a a long-term or a, you know, a drag on the whole thing, because we are, especially considering our rep. I'm just wondering if it's not from a time, you know, a time commitment standpoint to find a design, we might be able to approach a couple of the companies that would just do the bill, so.
I mean, I'm mostly worried that that would disincentivize other people from bidding on our RFPs when we issue them and then see their ideas and plans and then go pick somebody else. And I think they're not gonna bid on the next one if we pull this out and then give it to somebody else or make them rebid again.
I get it, I get it, but I mean, if we find out, and I mean, I'm not gonna beat this up, because I know there's, considering where we're at in the process, you know, like I say, I, I don't want to start, you know, reinvent the wheel or start the whole process over again, but if we were to find out that a design would only take two months, and we were to find out that that design only costs 50 or 60 thousand dollars, is it gonna be considerably more net? You know, a couple hundred thousand, but we're talking 6 million. So, you know, I mean, are we, I guess, I'm wondering about the, the type of construction. I mean, one was a poured structure, the other's precast panels. One's much faster, but is it more expensive? I don't know, you know, so I'm just wondering if.
Those, those options could be explored with the designer. Or with the contractor.
Would it be appropriate to get McHugh in here before we pick a contractor? Oh, are you McHugh?
Hi, yeah.
Hi, McHugh.
Welcome.
I've been holding my tongue.
So, do you want to talk about your design process, what options we have?
Sure. So, on our team, Andy Toc, Vice President with McHugh.
I'm sorry, you're named again?
Andy Toc.
Hi, Andy.
I'm Vice President with McHugh. So, on our team, we've got Desmond, who is similar to Walker, that they are kind of a national, just a garage company. Which I think is what really set our design, our package off, was and I think that was kind of what you were trying to do with doing this as a design build process, that you threw it out there just as a blank slate. You didn't have any guidance for how many spots or anything. So, what drove that design was trying to maximize that and to do it as efficiently as possible. So, by doing that, kind of floor and a half, what we were able to do was minimize how much fill we had to pull out, because here, taking any dirt away is all gonna end up being subtitled, it becomes very expensive. Which kind of speaks to your, you know, going down, even though that's nice, it's just, you know, in Illinois, it's very expensive to take dirt away. So, as far as kind of developing that design to get the facade that you want, that is cooked into that schedule, and we know, and the design team is fully engaged with, you know, this is our first shot at what we think it would be. But knowing that we have several months in that process for you guys to explore that, to get the facade that you really want.
And what's clear in the proposal, that this is just a starting point, so I'm not worried about.
Right, and realistically, some of the options that you come up with may well be more cost effective too.
If you eliminate the big tower, we could use that to put details somewhere else. What about, what about the idea of putting a storefront on, on the first floor and parking on the second floor? What, what is your feeling on that?
You know, the, I think one of the things that limits that, if you look at how much street frontage there is there? By the time you get the double driveway in, and the stair tower, or whatever your exit is gonna be, it's, it's pretty limited, the amount of frontage that you really have.
You might have two storefronts.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, and if, I mean, a typical, typical storefront, if it's like a regular retail path, would be what, 15, 20 feet, up to 30 feet deep depending on what it is? So, I mean, you could lose just one set, just one set of stalls on that front face. You know, and that's something that the team would definitely be able to work with you guys on, right? I mean, it's.
Are we talking skyrocketing costs then, or?
Well, the structure is gonna be very similar. And so really, you're talking about, it's gonna have to have three hour separation. So, you know, that whole, that whole area, may screen walls and things like that. The whole garage is already sprinkled, so it's just extending that through there. And, and usually for retail, a lot of times you're just putting in a, you know, a, a dark box, you know, you've got basic, basic power lights. Has to do the final.
I mean, to me, you're not, you're not really shutting that idea down. You're saying.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, okay.
I appreciate it. Any other questions?
Can we print, project the rendering on the screen as a request?
Does any of that stuff go up in there?
Well, it is on the, on the village website. If you go to the agendas for today, in that packet.
Well, I just meant now.
Well, we don't, I don't think we have it set up. Sorry.
It's worth it.
Yeah, it's worth it.
You missed the earlier part of the meeting when I apologized for not having it up there, because it's okay. We didn't, we didn't get it done.
Andy, I'm sorry, what were you, what was your point again?
Um, I think it was, oh, the temporary, in the meantime, could we, but I think we moved on past that, that was my last question.
Those are definitely options we could look at.
Yeah.
Well, and if we're talking about this time next year, through the winter months, I don't think it's gonna be as big of an option or issue, but we're also talking about one flat, nice weather season before our situation's gonna change considerably, so.
Yeah, like Dickens and Dundee might be an exception of, like, if there was something we could do for Dickens and Dundee to make some sort of parking a little easier. But yeah, just.
We can definitely look at that. I think there's some good options for doing those, especially like on special events and on like Friday and Saturday nights, but I mean, the I've observed and had people tell me, and you know, our business community who's still here could attest to this, even on a, on a February, Friday night, Thursday night, there's no parking. I mean, it's, it's just, it's a, it's a year-round issue because of the success. It's a great problem to have.
Yeah, it is, but.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Nice meeting you.
So, was anybody in your audience, I mean, we've got a lot of our business patrons down, or merchants down here. It would be a little awkward at this point to reintroduce public comment, but if anybody would like to weigh in at all, you know, feel free.
How about the land behind Cobb's very much, you know? Consider that for the space of parking and tap into all three options we had, behind Cobb's, River Street, and Mr. Rosen's block?
Yes.
Go for the whole garage, 6 million, flat relocation?
Yeah, possibly, I mean, but like, like we were saying, the idea of, of flat lots within, in the downtown is probably a, you know, last resort type thing. As far as the property north of 311 on Barrington, well, that's owned by other individuals, and so we would have to explore acquiring that, and that would be.
Or leasing it.
To be fair.
Or having them donate it.
Well, true enough. We've gone through the process of trying to acquire it, and it's taken a lot of time to do. My only point is that it would, it would add to the process there as well. But, but yeah, and as far as that, that gravel lot, the number of spaces that that would accommodate is a lot less than you would imagine. The, the shape of it, it kind of goes to a very narrow point, so the, the southernmost, you know, 40 feet of it probably wouldn't accommodate too many, too many vehicles. But also too, the, the, the town's hope is that we could extend the depot grounds center and have that as a green space to to expand, you know, extend, I should say, the, the center square, basically, yeah. So, but, good points nonetheless, so. Right.
Do we know, do the special events really benefit our businesses? Do, do we know that for a fact? Because, because here, my take is, very special events, yes, we need parking, because we end up closing River Street from Hill Street to Barrington, we end up closing Meyer Street, and that probably takes out 100 spaces. And I've often heard businesses complain that they can't get their regular patrons into the establishment when the special events are going on. So, I mean, I love the special events, I, I, I like seeing activity going on in our downtown district, but if it's really not benefiting our businesses, and it's just a event that the community's having, I see that benefit, but if it's not helping the businesses, I don't know that it's, it's really something that we should do as frequently as we tend to do every year. And on a Friday or Saturday when, when there isn't a special event, I will brand it that there, it is difficult to find a spot, but you go a block away or whatever, and you're able to find a spot, so. I, I just don't know that the parking issue is as big of an issue as we believe it could be, other than our special events. And the report that Joe Heinz put out November 21st of 2021, as I believe Christine Kunti mentioned, and maybe Andy, the is, we can pick up 83 lots for 450,000. Now, that was two years ago, I'm sure it's 600,000 or 700,000 now. But I would almost think we should try that first before spending 6 million dollars or whatever, and I saw the funding options in there, and the TIF expires in eight years. I, knowing the school district's position alone, I don't think any community in District 300 boundaries will ever extend the TIF. You can end the TIF and then start a new TIF, because you don't need the other taxing bodies' permission to do that. But once you end that TIF, whatever increments you've built in the, however many years that TIF is old, will all be turned over to the other taxing body, and you're gonna start out with a new, a new floor. And it may take a while to build that dollar amount, that increment back up, to where you can pay for it. And if you're not paying for it out of a TIF or out of a BDD, then it's going into the general fund. And I, I was a village trustee when we passed Home Rule, and then I worked tirelessly with other former trustees in that a couple of years ago, when Alan Skillicorn tried to repeal Home Rule. But I almost wish now that I hadn't have worked with, against Alan, because his fear was, I mean, when we passed Home Rule in 2003 or '04, we said we wouldn't raise taxes, you guys, you have not raised the property tax portion of it, but we also said that we would not bond in advance, and this really did bond it, millions of dollars in advance.
Yeah, we did, we did, and that was, that was a gamble on, on how the, you know, the TIPS are handled, because if you're gonna borrow ahead of TIF revenues coming in, it better pay off. It did in East Dundee's case, so, you know. But, you know, to the counter of what you're saying, Frank, the question is, and I get your, your point on, on TIPS, and how do you address the yet-to-be addressed, or the, the other development that's still in the district that hasn't been developed? I mean, if, if every developer out there is going to eye a community that has TIF funding available first, that's where they're gonna go, you know? And so, we still have a significant amount of, of potential here in East Dundee, and spec, you know, specifically in our downtown. And the eight years left on TIF isn't enough, so yeah, we're gonna have to balance that out. We know, we know that if we were to dissolve it and start over, yeah, we're, we're gonna have to pay off, if you will, probably six, maybe seven years' worth of revenue that would be going to the, the developers who are already here. They'll get that, we know that. But if we just, if, if there isn't enough left on it to, to attract anybody, so what do we do, you know? It's, it's a tough call, and it's rhetorical, but.
No, I, I, I'm not saying it's, many challenges facing, facing the village, and many challenges when, when you grow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are many growing cases.
Frank, I need, I need to make a point.
Sure.
About one of the things that you said, questioning the events, and I want to make, I think there's a critical component that you didn't factor into the events, and originally, the events were put into place to help advertise the village and the businesses within the village. But the main part of it was to benefit the residents and the community, and to bring the community together face to face, and that's been a success. So, we cannot throw that out. I think we're known for that, and, and we, we need to deal with the next set of challenges, which, which we're doing right now.
But I don't know that our residents need parking, parking grounds.
I agree.
Those coming here from outside of the village may need, may need.
Well, but that's what's supporting the village, so there's a balance there. It's supporting all these people's businesses, and we then feed off the sales tax that's, that's providing those businesses, and so we need that. And yeah, when you mentioned that, well, people can go and park a couple of blocks away, we also have to balance out the inconvenience to those residents that have all these cars parked in front of their house all the time, and we hear about that, so.
Let's recognize Cliff and AJ.
Cliff? I love the discussion, and I love the interaction that you're allowing, the participation, and I'm like, wow, I agree, wow, I agree, wow, I agree. Observationally, it seems like, to me, we're dividing into two pieces. You know, the problems of the past, of yesterday, that we need to catch up, because we don't have the parking. But honestly, we're talking about future developments. I don't know how those are successful without the parking. So, whether the, the yellow Dover Line property that's coming online, I don't see how that is successful unless we solve what we're trying to fix backwards. And, and I just don't get how, I'm, I'm just not smart enough to figure that out, but to me, that's it. Are, are, are we saying AJ can't fill up his place on, you know, and you could stand on my balcony, it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, Monday nights maybe not so much, but those nights, it's full up. So, how do we fix backwards in preparation for what might come forward? And can I hoping that that's what we're all, is what's going to be? Because I think that that property, when you say Cadillac, I think that, I mean, if you go backwards 25 years, this is what we're looking for. This is, this is the piece that's going to put this together, you know, and you can't park. And, and Scott, I'm not suggesting in any way, shape, or form that this is the only place that that parking lot can go, like, I somewhat agree with you, but you know, but the parking issue doesn't go away, whether it's there, or over there, or over here. The next piece that comes on doesn't work, whether that's a rally center, whether that's a, you know, a skate rink in the middle, you know, that, you know what I'm saying? You don't, you can't, can't move forward because we have to fix the past, and it's out of my expectations, so. Yeah, you know, as far as like your thirsty Thursdays, wine down Wednesdays, I can tell you, we're very successful. I mean, we're slant, so I would push you for more than not less, because it really does, you know, TS, we're all here, I mean, we know. And we're busy, you know, year over year, our numbers are very positive. I mean, 42%, you know, it's a huge number. And on Friday night and Saturday night, I, I have older folks that, you know, patronize our place, and they can't park. Right? It's not convenient, but it's not necessarily that they are, you know, put a park in, and handing their spot, but that distance does become a part of, a bit of an issue for them.
Sounds like you need some valley parking.
We, we did that. For Oktoberfest, Oktoberfest, we were slant, you know, like, I, I know there were some opportunities where we could work with things with each other on, you know, kind of how we place things, but we were slant, you know, and what we ran into on Oktoberfest is, everybody wanna come in and use it?
You know, and what we ran into on Oktoberfest is, everybody wanna come and use a washer and, you know, pretty much, you know, like we were, the tent was ours or whatever, but they're all good problems for the business. Not bad. So, I think that's important to understand. But the other side of that is, you know, and I agree with, you know, what Scott's saying about, you know, that space is valued and it is kind of a dime piece right there. But it's how do we get it done? But, you know, my biggest point about parking is, let's just not be half-braided. Let's either do this or not, let's get it done. Something, right? Because any spots will help us. You know, I got Tom to give me the parking on Oktoberfest, and it was a huge help. Because what I did is I gave 50 spots back to my partners, because I was able to use this lot. So, we helped everybody by getting that lot, you know? So, I, you know, like I said, whether it's Oktoberfest or Thursday, Thursday, wine down Wednesdays, they're a huge success and a huge draw for us.
Awesome. It keeps us in the public eye. No, I just think it keeps us in the public eye as well, and that's to be considered. So, you know, if East Dundee is on people's minds, they're gonna come down, and that's what we're looking for.
If we communicate anything, thank you for helping us to participate.
Yes.
No problem, we got you.
You know, as far as fee structures are concerned, you know, I know a lot of towns do it. I'm not necessarily bored with it, but I get it. You know, I kind of see where you guys are coming from, it's clear, you understand it. But, you know, for us, it's, you know, it's what it takes to get this forward.
Well, that's something we can always adjust on the road, too. I mean, if it comes to it, that, you know, we need to implement some sort of help from the public user fee of some sort, well, you know, we can go that way, so...
Yeah, we go to St. Charles, our local, to knock through pain.
Yeah, right.
You know, and we are getting to a point where people are coming. And I think they will continue to come, you know? I think it's a plus for us not to have it, but I don't think it's gonna hurt us long.
Right. Anybody else? All right, so...
Thank you.
I guess we have a basic consensus on which way we wanna go on this.
Do we have a consensus?
There we go. We can...
Would you like direction to move forward?
I have, you know, it seems like there's generally a decision to move forward. I think we should do a little more work on the financing and come back. Exactly. Come back in two weeks, potentially talk about a word of a contract with a funding mechanism that we can all be comfortable with. And I've seen a head nod, so...
Well, I'm just wondering, would a committee of the whole be worthwhile to have between now and then to discuss that, or just... I mean, because you, generally, these discussion-type points are meant for that. So, we haven't had one in a while, and so...
We could look at that, and we could also look at the agenda for the 16th and see if there's enough bandwidth to handle it.
If there is, then okay, great. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so that'll take us to our next item then, which is a discussion of the Village John Properties at 2 and 4 North Van Buren Street. These are two houses that are... Right, that's a good word for it. That we acquired, we acquired two, correct?
Yes.
Before, have we acquired four yet?
Yes.
We have.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was close.
So, very difficult houses to access, both from the east or the west. The idea that I had when that first house went up for sale was a green space that was a dressed-up intersection at Van Buren and 72, a welcome to East Dundee sign, that kind of thing. Since it was an oddball piece of property that really isn't conducive to development, if you will, I thought it would be worthwhile to explore that. When the next one came up, I thought we could expand on that. And then to the north, we have a big wall of green separating the next home. And so, those two houses, I think, are uniquely suited, if you will, for that kind of purpose. But the discussion here is...
Well, the discussion is, do we wanna knock them down basically right now, right?
Yeah, and I think, is the one structurally got problems, the four, the white one?
So, our building inspector isn't here this evening to opine on the condition of the buildings, but there was never any communication to me thus far, and he has inspected it along with Public Works Director. Haven't been any communication to me so far that there's any structural integrity issues. But the question before us is, what do we wanna do in the interim period while we talk about, think about, plan for what will go there in the future?
We could leave it as-is. We could budget to demolish them in 2024.
Just bring it over for now, that we want to know. We also need to consider, too, the adjacent property to the east, that being the Mexican restaurant. Access for the village to that, I know there was some question on that, so I don't know if we've resolved that issue or not.
Well, I think this goes to a bigger, like, we need to have a plan of what we wanna do.
Yeah, absolutely.
And really, the question is, A, do we have the money to knock it down? And would it make, would it make sense for us to do that if we don't even have a plan in place yet?
Well, I would say, to be honest...
Yeah, taking it down and...
I'm asking, I don't have, I don't have an opinion either way, but I think we need to have a plan. And but if we don't have the budget to do it now, then we have to budget it for '24.
True, but, I mean, when you think about what we did on Van Buren, the water treatment plant, all we did was take that down, and I think, I don't think anybody could argue that it's not better the way it is right now, even though it's an empty lot, than with that old building that was on there. It was pretty rough. So, this, I think, is kind of the same way. I think to Scott's point, if we were to just go ahead and knock them down and just plant grass seed, I think it would be an improvement. What, you know, what we choose to decide or what the board decides to do with it from there, you know, is gonna take further discussion, but, you know...
And if they're gone, then that opens up the opportunity to start, regardless of what we decide, we can restart on what we wanna do as far as eliminating that retention wall and...
True.
Working with the IDOT, I think, I think, well...
Yeah, does that help that effort?
On that turn.
Because I think the priority, for me at least, is getting it so that that's a safer intersection, like you mentioned, putting the right turn lane there possibly. So, if we can, I think I'd wanna know what that does to the property before deciding anything about the rest of the property, because I feel like making that intersection more accessible or safer. So, you turn right on red, will improve our traffic flow issues.
Turn right on red off.
When you're coming, yeah. Yep.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, when you're turning right on the 72 from your Van Buren, going south.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't know if the layout, we, that, do you remember, Frank, the, when the village put that no turn on...
They didn't have the road.
No, I realize, but the idea was, because it was a sightline issue that caused the...
Yeah.
The idea that put up no turn, right?
I think it's a sightline issue. I don't know if you'll ever read it or read it on red there because of the traffic coming downhill.
Yeah, well, so...
But the other way, though...
Which way?
The way when you're on top of the hill, looking left, wanting to turn right, going down the hill, there's plenty of sight there. I don't know why that one's no right on red.
Are you talking about if you head west and you wanna take a...
No, I'm talking about if you're heading down Van Buren from the south, you're heading north on Van Buren.
Towards 72.
Towards 72, why you shouldn't be able to turn right on red there is beyond me. I don't, I don't understand that at all.
I think that was a safety issue.
The school.
That's fair. I mean, it is what it is.
I already asked about that. Yeah, it is a school.
I guess the timing of the lights, too, the one on River and 72, maybe that's part of it.
I will say that is true. Those two lights are not timed well. If you're, if you're turning left from Van Buren from Elgin, from the Elgin direction, turning left onto 72, that light at the bottom of the hill is red. So, all those cars are backed up, and there's nowhere to turn left. That's ridiculous. I mean, that, we should talk to IDOT about changing that. Re-engineering the lights on, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, whether or not they'd have to...
But anyways, it doesn't have anything to do with these properties.
So, what can we improve by lowering that? Just removing, that retaining wall doesn't look good, so we can get rid of that. And we could put a right turn lane on 72 when you're coming downhill to turn right on the Van Buren.
Yeah, that...
And the sidewalk, that's wider, because people that've seen the strollers, they're on top of the street, and that's so dangerous.
Well, the, that cement wall that's there now, that fluted wall, structurally, I don't know if it's holding back...
I'm sure it's...
The earth, obviously it is. It probably could be pushed further in.
Or stepped back even.
But... Well, right, so that'd be, we'd have to, that would be a down-the-road type of thing, what we wanna decide on. I just envisioned if we were to keep it, it could just certainly be veneered with some other sort of stone product, because it's pretty dismal, the way it's now with that chain link fence on top of it, that's...
I think it just is, it's, I feel like it's a dangerous walking.
Yeah.
And if, with the school right there...
Yeah, if we could expand that walk, it'd be great.
Yeah. And with the desire to try and, again, encourage as much walkability in the village for us to not address that is critical.
Property, you know, it leaves, we have all kinds of possibilities that we could, we could look to, so...
Yeah, yeah. I think it, I think it's a great, with, with having the visibility there and where it is located, it's a great entryway point for a piece of public art and entryway to, you know, downtown, you know? Yeah, right, yeah.
I noticed West Dundee...
The pillars?
I noticed that they put up wave finding signs on their little banners on the streetlights. That's interesting. Be a lot cheaper than building on structure.
Yeah.
Joe, would you have any sense of what it might take to bring those two buildings down?
Yeah, they're in here.
It's 44,000.
Forty, forty, forty-five thousand.
The only reason I say, okay, six thousand.
That's a building. For both of them, including the foundations? That's, you think that's expensive?
It was 40 for both, it was 40 for...
Not each, together.
No. Twenty-four, 275 for four, and 22, 285 for two.
Right in the packet.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Because you could drop the grade by putting the film to the basement.
Yeah.
Is there other basements on both those?
I suppose.
To the east, then, you'd probably have to put some sort of retaining wall if you were to lower everything, just to, you know, do something to this little bit. Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Cool.
All right, so...
So, first step would be to just raise, I guess, and then decide...
Is that what everybody is...
Put into budget next year, thoughts on how we wanna further it?
Okay, we'll put it in the proposed budget for 2024 and then plan to start in spring.
And work with IDOT.
I don't...
Love the idea of our insurance.
Yes, that would be...
You don't need to have it raised to start working with IDOT, do you? Right, for planning and, yeah.
We'll start those conversations right away.
Awesome.
You just have to have a lot of patience. Bit slow to...
Don't we know?
Okay, anything else? No? Great, okay, that'll take us to village reports. I'll start out just saying I attended along with a number of other trustees the IML conference of downtown. I went to the Friday night sessions, didn't... Pete, I need to give you a call, so if you're leaving, I'll need to talk to you. It was worthwhile, I got to see a lot of people that I knew, it was worthwhile. The one on Friday was on TIF and changes in that, which was certainly apropos. But the only other thing that I wanted to say was just how pleased I was with Oktoberfest. My hat, again, is off to everybody, I mean, administration, Public Works, the police department, the volunteers. I mean, it was just really well-received. Last year, it rained on us. This year, it was just phenomenal. The bands were great, the response was great, everybody was, you know, having a good time, all behaved. The only downside, I think, is that we ran out of the blue and white paper hats.
Every year.
Yeah, and boy, I tell you, we had a lot of requests for them after they went away. Went through seven cases of the plastic steins, so it was really, really a great time. So, I appreciate everybody's help on that. So, Kathleen, what do you got?
Okay. I apologize, I have a little bit of a list, since I wasn't here at the last meeting. In one of the previous bi-weekly reports, Chief had mentioned about some kids that were, should have been in school and weren't in school. Then we don't have a truancy ordinance to try and enforce to have them, and they were also not very cooperative kids, and as well as their guardians weren't very cooperative. And so, do we have any, I would like to see that, or some, some kind of discussion and understanding of what the ordinances are, so we don't have, like, all the kids coming to East Dundee because they know they can get away with it. That is one thing. Also, on 8/27, there was a video of a hit-and-run behind 311 Barrington. And the reason why I bring that up is, also in the report, Chief mentioned, or whoever wrote it, mentioned that they were trying to get the video of that so they could see from the building owner. I know there's been, this is the second time this has happened in that lot.
And be back then to somebody, you're saying?
Hmm?
Somebody back then, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the second time, and weren't able to get the video from the owner of that building because it wasn't operating properly. So, part of the issue is, is we've got municipal lot behind that building lot. And so, if we are getting to the point where we're having these multiple issues and if they're not being cooperative or keeping their camera running properly, or not sharing film they might have, that do we, should we be looking at putting a camera in there to protect the village as a whole and the people that are parking back there? I mean, you were just saying that, you know, walking that further past that lot is kind of sketchy, so, or could be. So, wanna take a look at that as well, so that... Phil's not here, but I wanted to thank him for putting the no-truck sign at the corner of Van Buren and Bonnie Dundee for Bonnie Dundee Road, because it's kind of dangerous, especially after the two buses crashed earlier this summer on Bonnie Dundee as they were trying to pass. Are there any more, were there any more applications for the commercial facade grant?
I'm checking brands.
Okay.
But it is open on a rolling basis through the end of the year.
There's, I know that up at the old Dominic's site, they're starting to do their facade. I let them know about it. So, just putting it out there that the facade grant is open. And it's a matching grant. Then fun stuff, I wanted to congratulate Michelle and Byron, who were the first couple ever to get married at the depot, and also probably one of the first kind of more semi-private events.
Probably the first.
Probably, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, did you have, did it go well? Did you have any issues?
No complaints, went smooth.
Awesome. And part of what, the reason why I'm bringing this up is, I met Michelle for the first time at Black and Gray, probably about a year and a half or two years ago. They were celebrating their engagement and her birthday. And Dan Duda said, you, you wanna get married at the, you need to talk to her. So, that's how I ended up meeting her, we started the conversation. And so, I guess what I wanna try and impart is we have a really great resource in this, in the... um, in this, in the, in the depot grounds and in the park. And, um, bring your ideas forward. If you're a resident, if you're a business and you want to try and use and, uh, use the grounds, bring it forward, because it only happened because we asked, and we tried to make it happen. And if it doesn't work, we'll shut it, shut it down, or if there's complaints, but there were no complaints. I also talked to Kate about her wine walk, and she was thrilled, she wants to do it again. She's, she was very, very happy. Did we have any complaints over that, or any issues? So it's, um, it's open and it's meant to be used, um, and appreciated by the whole community. I wanna congratulate Rosie O'Hairs on their nomination for the 2023 Kane County Chamber of Commerce Customer Excellence Award. Um, that will be awarded this Saturday. Trish and I will be there, and I will let you tell your part of it. I won't steal your thunder on that. And then, um, I think I'll say this next point for our other, our other meeting. And then, um, I also attended the IML Conference on Thursday, um, Friday, and Saturday morning. Wealth of information, learned so much, um, and there's gonna be more questions and angles to come on that. Learned a lot about, um, financing options for lead pipe replacement, um, what other, um, communities are doing. And learning is really tiring, is what the other thing that I learned, we were exhausted every day after it. But it was, it was well worth it, and I'm glad we attended. So thank you for, to the village for making that possible for myself and the other trustees. That's all I have.
Scott?
Um, all I would say is, uh, you know, I organized the Friends of the Fox River cleanup a couple Saturdays ago. Went great, we were able to get right down at the shore, which we couldn't do last year because of all the rain. But it wasn't that bad, seeing as we did it a couple of years, you know, ahead of that. Just wanna thank Phil for his help and, you know, the village for letting us use a couple of, uh, pieces of equipment, so, thank you.
Cool. Rich?
No report.
Trish?
So going to the chamber awards dinner, Kathleen, on Saturday, we're honoring Mary Kay Harvey as our East Dundee Volunteer of the Year. And she's on the East Dundee Arts Council and has just been amazing. And also, she's on the parade committee for the St. Patrick's Day Parade and has, like, single-handedly made the buttons that are sold throughout all the businesses, and she's just amazing.
She made the what?
The buttons, the pins, yeah, that, um, that were sold to the businesses to raise money for Friends of the Fox and, uh, the Fish Food pantry. And so I'm just excited and delighted and honored to give her the award.
Exactly. Cool.
Andy?
Uh, yeah, I'll echo that. Uh, she's done an amazing job with all the chalk art installations and coordinating a lot of people. A lot of residents have wanted to artwork, and she makes time to meet with them and make sure they have what they need. And then also went to the IML Conference, and it was, uh, a ton of information, it was very good, so thank you for sending us and recommending it. I won't go down the list of, there's like twenty breakout sessions, but, uh, one that was interesting was the more walkable trend within villages, that even larger villages are trying to find pockets of two thousand people to try to create a walkable community with trails and all the things that residents might wanna use, and it was impressive to see how far ahead we were. We kind of had that perfect size, we do have an amazing bike trail, and, um, a few tips that they offered was connecting the trail to not just having an artery, but, um, could you walk to the school from it? Could you get to, uh, up to Santa's Village or up to the terrace, like, giving arms to the trail so that, um, people are seeing, uh, a reduction in a need for parking because of e-bikes, e-scooters. Residents that can easily hop on, if it's a protected, uh, path, just for cyclists or scooters or walkers. Uh, a lot of people, um, and I see this on the trail here, um, there's e-bikes, um, just like, I'll pass, I used to pass one, uh, on on my ride and a couple of years ago, and now there's probably twenty or thirty on my ride. So a lot of people are using those to get around, so, um, something to explore in our town is how do we kind of branch out a few other side veins of our trail to make it so less residents have to bike or drive and park in the downtown, uh, like, from the terrace, you could just scoot on down.
Bring in the river, that kind of thing, too.
Yeah, and get to the river. But yeah, that's all.
Cool, cool. Joe, anything else?
Do you have a report?
Nope. You got anything? Kelly?
Erica.
Erica, that's what it is, nothing. All right. Well, I appreciate everybody coming, that'll be it. So we're not going into executive session.
We are going litigation.
Oh, we are, I'm sorry. So we're gonna go into executive session for litigation, so if I could have a, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, close to the public and media under the provisions of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, five ILCS one twenty dash two C.
Eleven.
Eleven pending litigation. And we will be adjourning directly out of executive session and not returning to open session.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Kuntzie?
Yes.
Saviano?
Yes.
Tribber?
Yes.
And Sauter?
Yes.
Okay, thank y'all for coming.
We take five.
We can't.
Please, five eight will evacuate the east.